The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'll call the council to order. Let the role reflect that all council members are in attendance and a quorum has been established. Our first order of business tonight is we have Representative Tony Jurgens here to give us a legislative update. We're very fortunate to have Tony here this evening. Tony, welcome to the meeting. We're very glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I've got just, I figured I would take the opportunity, we have a little time off at the Capitol this week, so I thought I would come in and talk to you a little bit about what we're, what we're working on so far this year and what I think we have to work on between now and the end of the session. One of the most important things that we've addressed so far this year is the MinLAR system. I'm sure many of you, if you've tried to get your license tabs renewed or titles transferred since July 24th. Whoops. I'll just keep going.
We're gonna put things on hold here.
You've, yes, you've, but if you've, if you've tried to have your license tabs renewed or titles transferred since July of last year, you probably have run into some issues with that. That's been about a nine-year, $100 million project, and when they rolled it out, obviously it didn't work, wasn't even close to working. And so, the governor had asked for additional funds. We in the, in the legislature balked at first about throwing more money at it. Eventually, we did give the governor another $10 million, but we did put some, some provisions in there for accountability, so that we can keep track of how that is spent. We've, let's see, oh, the legislature recently also approved the contracts for the state employees, about 33,000 Minnesota state employees. So, that was a long time coming. I was glad that we could finally do that. One thing that we need to do before the session ends is address a $329 million budget surplus and what we want to do with that. Our state's economic experts suggested that that is in part because of the tax cuts both at the federal and the state level. And one of the things that we also need to, probably the biggest thing we need to address yet this year is tax conformity. With the changes of the taxes at the federal level, that has ramifications at the state level as well. And so, before we, before we adjourn in the end of May, that's something that we'll need to address. Locally, MinDOT is work, continuing to work with you on Highway 316. I was happy to see that. I've attended a couple of the workshops, and I look forward to seeing what, what plan that they put in place with the input from you at the city as well as the, the members of the community. And of course, this is a bonding year, and Melanie and Justin were up to, to present at a committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. I think that went well. I think it helped that they were here to actually see what the asset preservation's needs are here at Hastings. And so, I'm hopeful that this project, the one and a half million dollars for the City Hall, will be included in a bonding bill. Also, some things that we're gonna be working on, there's with the growing opioid epidemic in the state of Minnesota, that's been on our radar. There's been a number of bills there. And as always, I'm ready to work with you. If you have any issues or anything that you want to work with, that you need help with at the legislature, you know how to get ahold of me. And Mr. Mayor, this probably isn't the time or the place to talk about any recent news, so I'll just say that I appreciate your 28 years of service to the city of Hastings, and I think that the city of Hastings is in a much better place because of your work here.
Thank you, Representative. I appreciate that.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to stand for any.
Thank you, Representative Jurgens. Council? Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you. Tony, you may not know this, but we had a hearing. I appreciate the hearing of staff going up there on the House side. Did the City Hall project get a hearing on the Senate side that we know of?
No, not to my knowledge. It has not yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Their deadline is April 20th, so we hope to get a hearing prior to that time, but we'll see.
Well, and we'll continue to work with them. And Councilmember Vaughn, I believe you asked before if there is anything that, anything more that you could do from a city level? And, you know, a joint letter from the city to the members on the Capital Investment Committee, both in the House and the Senate, wouldn't hurt. So, if, if you were so inclined to do that...
Remind them, huh?
Yep, just to remind them. But, you know, I think, and we talked about it before too, members of, you know, both sides of the aisle were, they spoke favorably of this project. Having been here last summer to, or fall to actually see what needs to be done, they remembered that during the, during the committee meeting, and I think that it went well.
That's great. Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Liefel?
Thank you, Your Honor. Hi, Representative, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Good to see you. You made, you made a bit of reference earlier about the money being put towards the driver's license enhancements, that sort of thing. Are we on track at all for when the state of Minnesota's gonna be up and participating in the enhanced driver's license program for traveling purposes, or?
Oh, the, for the Real ID?
For the Real IDs?
Actually, I believe we are on, on pace for that.
Okay.
But I expect that if not, they will be, we will be granted another extension from the federal government, as long as we show that we are working towards it. And initially, the Department of Public Safety indicated that they wanted to build that system from scratch. And I think with the problems that we had with MinLARS, they decided that they would go out and find a system that had been implemented, or at least a company that has implemented that in other states, and reusing as much of that code as possible, which I think is a, was the right move to make. So, they are working towards it. Whether or not they hit that October deadline, I mean, that'll come before you know it. But if not, I believe that they will be granted another extension if needed.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Appreciate it.
I can't stay, 'cause I've gotta go do the update out at Denmark Township as well. So, have a good meeting. Thank you.
Enjoy your Easter break there at the legislature. Okay, next I'll recognize our police chief. We have the swearing-in of reserve officers this evening, and I'll let them, let him introduce them. Welcome to the meeting, Chief. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Your Honor, Mayor, council, and city staff. As you said, we have the distinct honor of introducing you to Hastings' newest police reserves tonight. They are individuals that have completed their field training, that, that takes a significant amount of time, and they're getting done just in time for a busy season. As you know, with Rivertown Days and the Cruze Inn and, and all the events that staff has been reviewing as the summer is, we think is coming upon us pretty soon, but with the snow today, I'm a little bit less optimistic. But anyway, they, tonight after they are sworn in, they again will join a longstanding history of police reservists in our city. And, you know, we just had a banquet a couple of weeks ago recognizing the service of our police reservists, and these folks donate between 2,500 and 5,000 hours a year to the city, and without them, we couldn't provide the support, the safety, the safety net that we have for all of the events and the increasing events that we've seen, especially now with the, with the new riverfront. So, we are looking forward to them joining us. As we've mentioned before, that we are all very tight on time these days, and to get people to donate what little time they have and give back to the city is, is commendable. So, with that, I want to briefly introduce these folks one at a time and give you just a little snippet about each of them before we present their badges and their oath. First, Gino Messina, Alexander Amundson, Cody Jones, and Nate Christiansen. Gino Messina lives in Hastings. He was born in New York, raised in Minneapolis, has lived here in Hastings for the past 10 years. He served as a reserve officer for some various agencies and was very excited to come and join us, so we're very glad to have him. He, he joined, yeah, he had joined our police department, he's been actually in training since September, so we're finally getting him in front of the council. He's currently a 911 dispatcher at DCC. He enjoys supporting his community on the front lines and behind the scenes, both, you'll see him on the street, supporting our activities, as well as behind the scenes dispatching for our county. His hobbies include spending time with his friends, family, and traveling the country by, by car and train, so. Alexander Amundson, he grew up in Hastings. He works for a security firm for the St. Paul Public School District. He's a full-time student at Inver Hills Community College and plans to work as a police officer in the future. He's committed to protecting the community, and he knows, and the community which he knows and loves and hopes to build a trust between the community and the police. Cody Jones, commonly known as Jonesy. Right? Is that right? All right, so that's what I said, Callum Jonesy. He was born in Red Wing. He graduated from Hastings High School in 2012. He's a shift supervisor for player development and guest services at Treasure Island. He's also an HR specialist in the Army Reserves. He's volun, he's volunteering for the police reserves because, for his love of giving back and serving his community. Nate Christiansen, Nate grew up in Cottage Grove, currently works for the nuclear power plant in Red Wing. He enjoys the outdoors and spending time with his family on his days off, which we'll have a few of those probably now. Nate chose to be a reserve because he wants to volunteer and give back to the community of Hastings. So, that's just kind of a snippet of what's inside of these guys and why they're here tonight and why they're gonna be serving our community in the future. With that, I'll have Julie step forward and give the oath of office.
Once we're done with the oath of office, we'll have a picture with council right here in the, in the front.
I solemnly affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and the ordinances of the City of Hastings, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a reserve police officer for the City of Hastings, the counties of Dakota and Washington, and the State of Minnesota. According to the best of my judgment and ability, on my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will uphold the Constitution, my community, and the agency I serve.
This time we're gonna present them with their badge and along with a copy of the oath of office, and then you can have a photo. Okay. That's good. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for joining the reserve force. We had the, last week, the dinner there, the banquet to, in honor of the reserve force. We have a, you have a special place in our heart because you're taking a special role as a volunteer. You're gonna volunteer your, your services to the citizens of our community, and sometimes it can be kind of dangerous out there. And, and in your hands is entrusted public safety, and so, there's a lot of responsibility in this, in this position. And we're grateful that people such as yourselves are there to, to help us and to, and to protect us. So, thank you. It takes a special person, special character to take on this role, and we're so glad that you're there to meet it. So, thank you very much. And, uh, welcome. Thank you. You know, if you were the butt of an altistion, we'd like patients to, to take your time. Are you gonna get in the front? Is your, oh.
Yeah. Come on. It's more important than that. Mind you.
Okay. Here we go. Okay. and city council workshop of March 19, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of those, those meetings? Seeing none, they stand approved. Council is to be considered. Melanie?
Your Honor and council, you have before you a request for an on-sale and Sunday liquor license for Rudy's at Pines. This is at 2015 Westview Drive. They've submitted, excuse me, all their paperwork, and they are wanting to try to open before our next council meeting. So, staff would be comfortable with this being placed on the consent agenda and would recommend its, its approval. Thank you so much.
Is there a motion to present this to the consent agenda? Councilmember Vaughn Sinna makes that motion. Second by Councilmember Fults. That motion is now before the body and discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. We go to the consent agenda as amended. Counsel, what's your wish? Councilmember Brooks makes a motion to approve. Second by Councilmember Lund. That motion is before the body. Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Fults.
Thank you. I was wondering, could I please pull consent agenda number two?
We'll put, we'll put consent agenda number two under administration as number two.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. To the makers of the motion, is that okay? You understand the motion? Okay. The motion is before the body. It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda with the exception of number two. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next on the agenda is community development. We have a resolution before the city council to reauthorize a special use permit at 105 West 23rd Street. John, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I will review the action at hand for us tonight, which is at 105 West 23rd Street, and the image I had is appearing again. Good. So, what we're looking at here is a property at 103 West 23rd Street, which was issued a special use permit in 1977 for automobile repair. What I'll do tonight is go through a little bit of an explanation of special use permits, some of its restrictions, and the request before us tonight. The request before us tonight is to reauthorize the previous approval that was granted in 1977. And within the packet itself, I put some background information, going through the approval process with the planning commission minutes, city council minutes that happened at that time. The permit was approved by council and was conditioned by four conditions for operation, which have been adhered to. Now, with a special use permit, there was no resolution that was granted at the time in 1977. It was granted by, by the council by a simple vote. Those actions have changed since that action was done. Since about 2002 or so, all of our special use permits have been done by resolution, and we're gonna take even further steps to amend our city code in the, in the coming months here, so that we can further explain the time limits and the issuance and the recording of these special use permits. So, those are actions of yet to come related to that. With this one here, it was granted in 1977. There was no timeframe for the issuance of it. There was no sunset clause. There was no time limit that stipulated it. We did review this with city attorney Dan Fleegal. He did some research, agreed that the, the permit that was issued in 1977 was still valid. And so, the applicant, Lloyd Rivers, has requested tonight that we issue a resolution that reauthorizes the previous approval, so that there is something more of record that, that the council has for a special use permit that could be recorded with the property. And so, on the screen here, I'm showing a couple of images of the property. The property is located in 23rd Street, just west of Vermillion Street here, and there's commercial areas to the east of it. This is the front of it here. The operation would, would be occurring in the back garage area. You notice that the garage doors are down. It's a self-contained unit. I did talk to Mr. Rivers about the operation. He would be doing motorcycle repair within there, which is consistent with the original special use permit. The operation would be fully contained within the building. There would be no motorcycle parts, and the doors would be closed for operation and construction that would be occurring within this property. Property is owned C3 commercial, has continued to be so since the original issuance of the special use permit. And as you can see from the map here, commercial areas to the east, to the north, you do have to the west, you do have some residential areas to the north and to the south itself. So, I can stand for any questions that you may have for this tonight, and to reaffirm the special use permit, this is a simple majority of council. And is Mr. Rivers here tonight as well? Nope? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John, for the presentation. Counsel, this issue is before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn Sinna makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Fults. That motion is now before the body. Additional discussion? Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a resolution in regards to a vacation or easement at 713 Ninth Street West and 720 10th Street West. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. What I have before you is a kind of a confusing drawing showing the property at hand and vacation requests that are part of this. You may recall that in October of last year, we did hold the public hearing to vacate an easement, which was within a former right of way. And we did not take final action at that time. The applicant was still working with Excel Energy and to figure out and negotiate an agreement for the current utility location. To give a little bit of history on this one, Oak Street was originally platted, was vacated in 2003 because it never really existed except for on paper. As part of the vacation in 2003, we did retain a 33-foot easement over this area in blue. Now, what the applicant wishes to do is to construct in addition to the garage down here, that is going to encroach into this easement area. And so, what is asked for tonight is for this blue area to be reduced to what's in yellow. The yellow is a five-foot easement along the west property line and a seven-foot easement along the, the south property line here. We have worked with all utility agencies and the city of Hastings as well. Existing utilities will be moved out. City of Hastings has no utilities in there and has no objection to the vacation of the easement, and the reservation is shown here in yellow. So, I can stand for any questions on this. The applicant, Mr. O'Brien, is here as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, John, for that presentation. Counsel, this issue is now before the body. What is your wish? Councilmember Lund makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Brooks. That motion is now before the body. Is there a discussion to the motion? Discussion to that motion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a presentation on the Vitals Mental Health mobile app. Is that, am I correct?
Not me.
That's not you.
I'm just playing that to you guys.
Okay. Sounds good. Welcome, Chief, again.
Once again, that was quick. Usually when I'm here, these meetings run long, so we are really doing good tonight.
We're moving along today.
We're gonna keep chugging along.
That's right.
All right. Mayor, council, the reason we're here tonight, of course, we were gonna present this at the last council meeting, but I think we had snowed out, and, and it was even some sign of that tonight again. I thought maybe it was bad luck. But we want to bring forth a proposal to council tonight to implement the Vitals Mental Health Crisis mobile app to be installed on our department-issued cellphones. Michelle Wirth did an article last week, I think in last week's paper. Many of you probably saw that, where agencies around Dakota County, 10 agencies, are piloting this mobile app on their phones to assist in dealing with mental health, health crisis calls. And the, again, the reason I'm here is the fact that this new program, this new app, came to light after our budget was, was voted on for, for 2018. So, this came about, was presented to Dakota County Chiefs late in 2018, and the Dakota County Chiefs unanimously agreed that expressed interest in, in applying for and implementing this mobile app in their respective agencies. So, tonight, first what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna provide a brief overview. I'm gonna highlight some key points that were outlined in your council memo. I think it covers just about everything in there. Then, you'll hear from Nick Tietz from Vitals. He's the representative that brought us, brought this to Dakota County. And then, Lisa Seaman will be here in a little bit, and she wants to talk about the value of this application when we're dealing with, as a resident that has an autistic child. So, this shouldn't take, take too long, so I'll draw your attention to the PowerPoint presentation. Vitals is an aware service. It creates a safer interactions for vulnerable individuals. As you can see, one in five U.S. adults experience a mental health crisis. Half of all chronic mental illness begins at age 14. Three-quarters began at age 24. Police data shows that the number of mental health calls have more than doubled since 2011. One in 10 response calls involve someone in a mental health crisis. What that means for Hastings, in the past two years alone, we've estimated that we've had over 1,200 mental health crisis calls. Those are ones that we could specifically call mental health crisis. As you know, most every call we go to, somebody is in crisis. It's just a matter of defining at what level. The, it said, "We have always responded to these types of calls in dealing with individuals who are suffering emotional and mental health disorders." However, as we know, with the deinstitutionalization of state and county-operated facilities and the evolution of medicine, public encounters with this population is ever increasing. Too often, and a lot of the, the cases that we see in the news are mental health crisis calls that go bad, when law enforcement are called to help and they turn violent, and officers are limited by the number of options that they have in any type, any type of a situation. What we have found, that the more information we have about an individual, it gives us a whole, a, a whole set of new tools in order to deal with, with these people. As I say, we can't, can't recognize every vulnerable individual because these situations move extremely fast. So, we're hoping with this Vital, Vitals app, we will have more information when we deal with people who are suffering from these conditions. When, I think what we've seen, we've heard some people have criticized this and saying, "Well, when we take this application and we come onto a scene and this, our, this phone app goes off and it tells us everything about the individual that we're dealing with." It tells us what their mental health status is, calming techniques, de-escalation, a number of things, and that gives us a lot, a larger range of how to learn to deal with these people. As you've probably heard, I hope, from the city administrator, that we have been committed to getting all of our officers' crisis intervention trained by the end of 2018. The new state mandate by POES is mandatory or mandating over the next three years that officers receive de-escalation training, culture awareness, and culture sensitivity training, and crisis intervention training. So, this mobile app is just another tool to help us get information, to help assess these problems quicker, and to come up with a proper, I guess, a proper tool or proper reaction to alleviate or avoid a violent situation. So, as I said, recently, Vitals approached Dakota County Chiefs, and they proposed a special rate to us if we were one of the first counties ever anywhere in the United States to adopt this program as countywide. And because we did vote to do that unanimously, we also helped build a better partnership with social services. What we have found over the last few years, when dealing with mental health and crisis situations, that the people who have the information on these individuals, we know the social services holds a lot of the cases on these, but they're not, because of data privacy, they're not allowed to talk to us or tell us about these. So, what this has done is we've now went, partnered with Dakota County Social Services, and they can sit down with the individuals that are maybe the caregivers or the individuals themselves, and actually give permission to have their Vitals information shared on this app. So, we are not housing any of the data. Vitals is whole, is the one who is holding the data. All it does is, when we get within 80... All it does is, when we get within 80 feet of the individual, if they are carrying a beacon that we'll talk a little bit more about, it shows up on our phone and we are just getting that information, and soon thereafter, it disappears. We can't save it, we can't store it. So they're really kind of an intermediary, if you will. So that is what changed, kinda changed the whole direction here. We have, through our housing partnership groups, we've been going around and around about information sharing, and this, I think, is actually the catalyst that will help us better communicate with social services in getting this information to the front line, and that is us, because that mental health crisis has ended up on our shoulders and has ended up on the doorstep of law enforcement and EMS in this community. So with that, I would like Nick Teetz to step forward, and he can just talk a little bit about what the program is, a little bit more detail. And I recognize Stan is here. It's Alan, right? Stan and I worked together in Minneapolis. He was Communications with Minneapolis Public Schools when I was there, so we dealt with a lot of this stuff. So ironic that we're in the same room talking again. So with that, Nick?
Welcome, Nick, to the meeting. We're very glad to have you here. Stan, welcome as well. We're very glad to have you here this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So, you know, the Vitals app allows caregivers and individuals to maintain a personalized profile with their specialized information to share with first responders and police when in close proximity. And I think it's important to note that it's the information that they want to put in and share. So this isn't a registry, this is all optional for people that want to participate in the program. The way that it works is that individuals are given a tiny beacon. I have a couple in my pocket here. This beacon has a Bluetooth technology. It's the same type of technology that you have in your wireless headphones. So it can take the form of a little keychain or a credit card, a flat device that some people choose to wear as a lanyard. This device has no information on it. So if this is lost by a child or adult in the park and someone else picks it up, there isn't any information on this. What happens is there's a little code that our app is listening for and is only available for authorized first responders. So first responders, police, fire, EMTs that have signed up with Vitals, listen for that little, it's a little, you know, 10, 12-digit code. It goes up into the cloud, into our private secure server where families have set up their profiles, and it pulls it down on the officer's phone temporarily so they can look at the information. And I'll show you what that looks like in a moment. So there's three components to our service. On the far left on the screen, you can see the caregiver app. The caregiver app is given to parents that sign up for the service. It can be used, again, on adults, children, teens, youth, and they use that application to manage the beacons. You can see the little plastic form factors there. If they have a mobile device, like an Android phone, the Android phone can also be used. The only reason that we made these plastic devices is because not everybody has a smartphone, and we wanna make sure that this service and technology is accessible to as many people as possible. In the center is the Vitals profile. Caregivers fill out that profile for each individual. And then on the far right is the first responder app that, again, only authorized first responders have. Now, both of these apps, the caregiver app and the first responder app, are available for iOS and Android, but you can't open up or get into the application without signing up for the service with Vitals. This is an example of the caregiver app. So you can see, the caregiver application allows a caregiver, so that could be a mom, a dad, or a guardian, to manage multiple profiles. It's one account per family. We've met families that have seven individuals that need this service, and they just have one signup cost for the entire family. And again, it works, you can see at the top, Charlotte, she's an adult with dementia. Caleb is a younger person with autism, and Kate has other conditions. And so it really works for a host of many people. And as we've gone out and talked with many of our nonprofit partners, Pacer Center, the Autism Society of Minnesota, the Epilepsy Foundation, and the Ark of Minnesota, what they really love is that this will work for so many different people and allow them to communicate when they can't always communicate for themselves. So this is what a Vitals profile looks like. You can see, it allows law enforcement and first responders to have, to quickly see the primary and secondary conditions, their name, a photo ID, their critical information, behavior triggers, de-escalation techniques, medications, medical information, and at the bottom profile, even the caregiver's contact phone number. So at a moment's notice, law enforcement now have many more tools that they can use to help de-escalate, build trust, and keep everybody safe, including themselves. Viewing media profiles. So what this allows parents to do is attach small media clips or images and pictures that law enforcement and first responders can use to de-escalate the situation. Sometimes it could be the video of a child's favorite video clip, or it could even be a video themselves. So in this instance, this is Kate, and Kate can leave a message for her son, who's non-verbal, and I'll just play a quick video clip of what that sounds like.
Hey babe, the people that are with you are keeping you safe, and I know you're scared, but mommy will see you as soon as she can. You're fine. Love you bud. Bye.
That little bit can mean all the difference for a child that is out of control, an adult that's not listening, and it all of a sudden gets their attention. And again, we're just giving more tools for law enforcement to build trust and engagement. And I can't tell you the number of parents that, when they see that video and they know that they can be on any officer's phone, the tears just come right away. It's a very, very emotional moment because they finally feel like they have something to help. This last photo here is what the first responder app looks like on an officer's phone. So this is an example of what it looks like if there were four beacons around an officer. They get a quick photo ID, who the person is, and some little information so that they can quickly better understand who's around them and come up with different strategies or techniques to help engage the population.
So as I mentioned, I wanted to introduce Lisa Seaman. We've done a lot of the torch runs. We've helped sponsor a number of the events out at the golf course, and then our last polar plunge, we plunged with the Hastings Shark. So Lisa has sat through a few of these presentations when Vitals first came to Dakota County. I sat down with her right away, and I said, "Is this something you could support as a parent of an autistic child?" And she's got behind it, and as mentioned, she was quoted in the paper this past, or two weeks ago, and I just wanted her to share with you what it means to her and her family.
Ms. Seaman, welcome to the meeting. We're very glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Lisa, nice to see you.
Thank you. Well, I guess what I'd like to say is, I have a 27-year-old young man who's not really a child anymore, who has autism and epilepsy and also has a developmental disability. And so for us, even though we hope that people will recognize our son when he's out in the community, people don't. And we went through a phase last summer where Ian had a medication change, and he became very easily agitated and very easily aggressive and it was just a nightmare. And it was unfortunate, but what I kept thinking was, oh my God, if we're in Target and this happens, or if we're at Walmart and this happens, someone's gonna call the police. And I'm not gonna be able to convince the officer and control my son and do all of these things. And something like Vitals is a situation where someone can look up on their phone and they can see, you know, this is Ian Kennedy, he has autism, Ian has very difficult speech. He doesn't, comprehension is very difficult for him. So if an officer were to ask him a question and they were to say, you know, Ian, what's the deal? You know, something like that doesn't make any sense to him. He might be mad because he couldn't find the right Charlie Brown tape on the display at, you know, at Walmart. And so if that happened and it escalated and it got out of control, his behaviors would be such that he wouldn't be appropriate, he wouldn't respond to questions, he wouldn't make eye contact with an officer. He potentially could look like he was really causing trouble. And I don't want him to get put into handcuffs, I don't want him to get tased, I don't want him to get any of those things, because he really is, even though he's a young, he's what, 5'10", probably 175 pounds, he's a strong guy. He could take me down easily if he wanted to. And so my fear was, what am I gonna do if this happens? And something like, a system like Vitals is really important because it really will help me to make sure that the community understands what my son is doing and what he's capable of and what he's not capable of. You know, he's really not an angry person, but if the wrong thing happens, he could become very aggressive and very difficult, to say the least. So when we talked about it, when I talked about it with Chief Schaefer, and I actually, I've been very involved in the autism world. I've worked at the Autism Society of Minnesota. I've done a lot of things. We do Special Olympics in Hastings. And like I say, I hope that people know my son, but I know that everyone doesn't. I won't kid myself. When he was a young child, it would have been great to have something that would help to track him. Now, I haven't checked on this for years, but a while ago, I looked up and I contacted the 911 Center to see if I could put information in a file about our home address, just that we had a child with autism there, and these are the things, you know, he's not very communicative, he's very repetitive, his language is very repetitive. They didn't allow, excuse me, they didn't allow us to do that. So I don't know if that's changed. I haven't looked lately, but so at least something like Vitals would really give us the opportunity to help officers and law enforcement understand Ian's behaviors. So I guess, I'm happy to answer questions, but that's really, you know, I think that's, it's just something that we could really use as a community, so.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Thank you very much.
So, as I mentioned, as we reached an agreement in late 2017 with Dakota Chiefs, our department indicated that it wanted to engage in the three-year pilot with the other 10 agencies in Dakota County. And one thing we didn't mention, the great thing about this is that if your child, if you have one of these beacons and you go anywhere in the United States, and that police department or that emergency service agency has also have these apps on their phones, they will get the beep too. So it's not just here. And that was the whole idea, that as Dakota County Social Services works with law enforcement and as this population becomes fairly transient, if we all have the app, no matter where we engage that individual, anywhere in Dakota County, we're all gonna get the same information and we're all gonna be able to respond appropriately. So I think that's why we think this is really cutting edge. The, there is an annual fee, of course, for the system, but what we discussed with, we reached this agreement, again, I said, with social services, and the agreement was, some of the, I'll just say, first of all, some of the hesitancy about signing up for this was, why should law enforcement and emergency services have this if the general public isn't signing up for it? And then the public is saying, "Well, we're not gonna sign up for it unless EMS and police have it." So it became kind of the chicken and the egg. So that's where we got the commitment from Dakota County Social Services. With this pilot, Hastings Police Department receives eight free beacons that we can hand out to individuals in this community free of charge for one year. So like Lisa, when I spoke with her, I said, "We'd love to give you a beacon for Ian and talk to your other friends and other folks in the Autism Society in Hastings, and we wanna get that beacon out for you so that we have your information in case we encounter those individuals." The other part was, the county has agreed to place eight more, right, in each jurisdiction? So we kinda put their feet to the fire and said, "All right, you have to go out and you have to get these beacons out in our community as well." So we don't pay until they have their eight issued throughout the community. So that's 16 beacons that we have free of charge in this community for the first year. So that is, that's a huge plus. This information, basically what you saw tonight was presented to our Public Safety Advisory Commission on February 8th. They liked it, they endorsed it, and they recommended implementation as well. So with that, I think what I put in the council memo, the three-year pilot is $6,500 total, $2,100 and roughly $2,100 and some change each year. I have verified this with city administrator. I am able to cover that the first year out of my budget. I'll use, I have to move some funds around, but that'll be an ongoing cost for at least the next two years that we will have to budget and allocate. So that's important for you to know when making a decision tonight. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation, Chief Schaefer. And questions? Councilmember Liefel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, I've got a handful of questions. First question, how many communities are currently using this service? Do we know around the country? Any?
Thirty-seven around the country.
Okay.
And it was piloted, this came to light last year in St. Paul, is the first police, major police department in the country to pilot this.
Okay. And just to clarify, so there's an annual cost to the police department to have this? There's an annual cost to the family or the caregiver annually to set this up? Is there anything in place for families who don't have the financial means to enroll their children in this service?
Yes, you talked to.
Thank you. There are a couple of different funding options for families. So we've been working really, really hard to get in and approved through the waiver system for families that need that. We just recently received our NPI number, and within, according to the state, within the next couple of weeks, we should be fully approved for all types of CADDI waivers, EW, DD, BI, I think I got all the acronyms down, and family support grants and consumer-directed grants. So we have lots of options for families that need assistance. We have a small scholarship program that we've started for families that don't fund, fall under any type of waiver. And then we are also working with other civic organizations such as, not necessarily in Hastings just yet, but around the state with Lions Clubs and Rotary Clubs that are interested to help fund scholarships for families. And we have a few other civic organizations that are also stepping up to the plate to help families. Our goal is to really, to provide a low-cost solution for families for this very important problem.
Thank you, Nick. You may wanna wait, one other question. So with the GPS technology, are families able to locate a child if a child were to wander off or go missing?
So there is a location assistant that allows families to find the last known location of the beacon. It's not an active GPS tracking technology. We chose that because we had a lot of concerns, we worked with a lot of families in development of this, and they were very concerned about how law enforcement might use a tool like this, and they didn't want an active tracker solution. It also, if any of you have any type of smart devices, Fitbits, anything like that, you know that if you add a tracking component like a GPS, you're gonna be charging it every day. And we wanted to make sure, especially young children that have any type, or adults that have any sensory issues, that we didn't have to take something on and off and have the high cost of battery replacement like in some other devices.
Thank you, Nick.
Yeah. Councilmember Brox.
Thank you. I think this is wonderful for several reasons, and I think it's going to only improve the interactions between our law enforcement and the public, which I think we all agree is a source of concern. So I just wanna say, just on two personal notes, and sorry to do this, but I have a family member who's schizophrenic, and I think that this changes a lot of the game when it comes to interacting with officers, because I've always been very pro-public safety because I had a member of my family in the public sector as a law enforcement officer, so I've always felt the need to advocate and promote police. But one time, I was on Facebook and got into one of those, you know, debates, and I couldn't comprehend why someone would be afraid of police, because I've never had any negative interactions. But a friend of mine, who has mentally ill parents, said to me, "You haven't had the experience of the police coming to your door and talking to your parents." She had an actual fear of police and of law enforcement officers. And that really showed me- And that really, um, that really showed me that my experience and her experience, maybe even with the same people, have been very different. And how wonderful it would be to have our law enforcement officers have this information, so when they walk into a situation, most of the time, they don't know what's going to happen, and this gives them another tool in their toolbox to approach a situation different. And I think everything about the mentality you have going into the situation can really dramatically improve or, um, or send the situation south. So I'm, I'm really pleased, um, to see this before us. I think it, it's amazing. They're doing amazing work, um, and I'm really happy that Dakota County is jumping on board with a pilot program, so we can see how it works, um, because obviously, I want to make sure that we're also, people are using it and so that it's useful. Um, but I just appreciate you bringing this before us and, and I fully support it.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Brock.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I would ask Chief Schaefer, um, first of all, are all of our officers have, um, you said department-issued smartphone, do all officers have them now?
Yes, they do.
And how about the reserves that we brought in today? Would they have this tool also?
They do not have, um, department-issued phones, but that question has come up, and, uh, and we haven't really, we really haven't gotten into that yet. And I don't think there's any, there's no reason why they can't. Yeah, there's no reason why they can't, we just haven't gotten to that point.
And you mentioned EMS also. I'm wondering, is that something that Hastings would propose, that our EMS, uh, EMT staff has it too, or is it, is it a per-fee-per-phone, or is it just a flat rate for the city?
No, it's a per-fee-per-phone. And, uh, we've had the discussion with, uh, Chief Shute already, um, he's expressed interest. Um, we've talked with the vitals folks. They are all, they are, um, uh, more than happy to get it going with, with Hastings Fire. However, they are trying to do like they did with Dakota County, is trying to get a, a number of, uh, fire departments and EMS on at the same time. Um, I think they can offer a better price and, uh, uh, and get more interest going. And we're kind of paving the way. Uh, we work very close with our, with our EMS, our, our, our fire department, so do most other agencies. So, uh, I'm thinking more in terms of, uh, give it a few months and, and we see how those interactions work, uh, whether the fire departments want to do it or not, but I know that there's interest in doing that here.
And then, yeah, the last question would be more of a technical question. You answered my question, the eighty-foot, why it's a smartphone versus the laptop in the police car. But what is, what happens if the info is not updated by the participant? Like me, I update half my stuff. If they're not updating, does it drop off on them saying, this is outdated info? This is four years old, three years old?
As, well, as long as they're signed up, um, that information is still going to be the same unless the caregiver updates the information. So as long as they're, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but as long as they're paying their fee and their beacon is active, we're still going to get the ping. But as far as the information goes, it's going to be up to the caregiver to update any information that's in it.
And that's my question. Do they get, do they get reminders saying, every six months, update your information?
Um, absolutely. One, one of the things that we're working on is, you know, how that reminder system would work, and then also working with our partners in county services, so that when they do have their, uh, you know, annual meetings, that that's something that they, um, you know, might add to their, you know, checklist as they're meeting with families to make sure that they have the most current information. Um, our, our goal is to help families and parents make sure that information's updated, but I think the thing that we've found, um, with the parents that have been using the application, what they love is that they can update this every day, because that's how fast their, um, the people they're taking care of change. What works one day might not work the next. And the technology of today, which is the sheets of paper that exist in our fire department and police officers', uh, uh, buildings, that can't be updated. Now, parents have an option that, that can truly be updated every day and work anywhere in the state of Minnesota.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there any further comments or questions? Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. So a few questions too. Um, the twenty-one-hundred dollars roughly, what we've been budget, budgeted out for the next three years per, that, that's not unlimited, um, users on the city side? How many users is that?
It was based on, um, twenty-one, twenty users. Yeah, it was based on the number of users. There were packages of, I can't remember the numbers anymore, but, um, I think after twenty-five or after thirty, the price goes up a little bit more, so.
Okay. And then, um, I guess also on a technical or logistics side of things, that, are you able to do a, a shared device type of thing, where it's checked in and out per shift, so that it, we don't have hundreds of them, you know, out and about, or?
Are you, are you talking about the beacons?
No, on the device side itself, so just to try to limit the amount of actual licenses that are out there.
Um, well, we, we issue the cellphones to each individual officer, so there's no, there's no handing off, and, um, the only way we've, we've reduced the number is that, um, like, police administration and investigators, people that aren't on the, on patrol typically won't have the app.
Okay.
That's how we keep the, try to keep the cost down to the front line.
Okay. And then just last one is, um, what's the plan or what's been successful in other, in the other cities as far as getting that, um, user base, as far as the actual, um, users of the app?
You know, so our, our, our primary method is, of course, you know, targeted outreach. Um, we've partnered well with our, our nonprofit partners to, you know, get messages out to the community that this, this tool and this resource exists, um, uh, working with the community engagement officers in law, uh, you know, in the different police departments, so that we can show up at community events. And then, of course, other, uh, advocate or advocacy organizations within the city, um, so that we can reach, you know, this, this is a very protected, uh, group of individuals, and, and we, we want to make sure that we're, we're doing it and building trust at every step.
Any other questions, Council? Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just would like to commend you, Chief, for, uh, taking the lead in, uh, participating with the rest of the county. Years ago, I used to work for the Department of Public Safety, Office of Traffic Safety, coordinating local law enforcement statewide, and I have to say, back then, Dakota County was one of the leaders in our state, and, and just so admirable how all of the law enforcement agencies within the county actually work together as a team, and, and you would be surprised, you know, how many, uh, counties that are out there where you don't see this kind of, uh, collaboration. And so I'd like to thank you for continuing that commitment and, and broadening its spans, you know, into new areas that affect law enforcement, so thank you.
Thank you. If I might, may, oh, go ahead.
Uh, please, did you have, did you have a comment?
Well, just a, a couple of things, uh, to Councilmember Brock's. You're right, this, this device, the, the other side of this is the opportunity to, when you're walking in a crowd of people or you are in the vicinity and the beacon goes off, it gives officers an opportunity proactively, reach out and to connect with people. And I know you have to be very cautious about that, but it sure does bring awareness and it, it does open the door to helping us approach and, and build relationships. And I talk about, a little bit about what happened, what's happened before vitals, uh, and Commander Showalter can vouch for this, the last couple of cases that we had in, in a, um, uh, a building here in Hastings where we had some, um, mental crisis calls with one or two individuals, and it required, uh, sitting down and having a meeting with all of the care providers and everybody that touches that person's life, and going around the table and talking about it, and then putting it all to paper. And we bring that paper to the office and then we email it out to all the officers, so they go, if you go to this address and you deal with this person, uh, and we've done, we've done some great work with that. It was kind of, uh, it's one of, kind of been an example. We've talked about it at some of the, the meetings in Dakota County about the great relationship and, uh, proactive work we've done to keep those situations from escalating. But then, this came, this walked through the door, and we're like, wow, wow, this is, somebody can just do it on a phone and it's right there, and, uh, so that was pre-vitals. I think vitals moving forward sure saves us a lot of time, gives us a lot more information, access to a lot more individuals.
Councilmember Balsanik.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Outcomes, uh, increased safety, improved police interactions, and then, uh, a more connected community. Whenever we have new police officers, whether they're reserve or actual officers, when I shake their hand, I always say, be safe, uh, which I think is paramount with, with a police officer, uh, reserve or otherwise. And in terms of what this does, uh, I think what it does is it creates the potential for a safer, uh, interaction, so that the officer is pulling up, got the situation, okay, you know, I, I can see what's going on here. And so the approach for not only the individual, but for the, um, I'm clicking off here, I don't know why, uh, not only the individual, but also for the officers involved. Tonight, on the national news, I'm watching a, a piece in another state, uh, two officers trying to subdue an individual, uh, finding out after the fact that, uh, the individual was on medication, had some, you know, situations that were unique to that individual in terms of, uh, mental health, and, uh, if these officers had that information, how much different might the interaction have been? There are cameras everywhere. Uh, this particular incident was recorded by people at, uh, the occasion where this individual ran out, and, um, uh, you know, cameras don't necessarily tell you everything, but, uh, if it makes our police officers safer, and that's the side that I'm looking at, not only for the individual involved, but for our officers involved, I, I cannot imagine a profession that I would least want to get into. And, and that's not in a derogatory way at all. Uh, it's because I, uh, am so in awe of a person who would want to be a police officer and at two AM pull over a car and not know what's going to happen. It, it could be one in a million things. Or an officer who shows up to a domestic and, you know, what's involved. Uh, but, you know, any additional information we can provide is going to, I think, make the officers feel safer, so that they are more on top of the situation and they can do what, uh, we would all like to have done. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you for that presentation, I think this is very important, and we'll be following this pilot project in the next, uh, three years. And I think, uh, that's, uh, it's a wonderful way of using technology. Now we can say, hey, there's a good reason to be on your smartphone, right? So, uh, but this is a tremendous opportunity to inform our officers to, a situation that could be potentially dangerous for not only the officer, but the family involved. So, uh, I look forward to hearing a report on this in the, in the next year and, and how this is going.
And, uh, I guess, uh, do we need a, um, a council, a, a motion to, to move this forward?
I, I, I don't believe we do. Uh, this is presentation tonight, and you have it covered in your, in your budget for this year. And, uh, and this was more informational for us to, to understand all the ramifications of it.
Very good. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Chief. Uh, next, we have, uh, the item that was pulled off the consent agenda, election poll book, equipment. Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess this is for Julie. Um, we were, I was reading your memorandum here, and so, uh, the city is looking at purchasing thirty-two electronic poll books, and it's only costing twelve thousand dollars. And so I, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that necessarily. I was more interested that if you could just describe, what does that actually mean, electronic poll books? Like, what does, how does that change our experience as voters as we come, um, into, uh, to do our civic duty in the fall? And then also, I was curious about, about what kind of security measures are going to be in place. I, uh, had gone to a women voters event about two months ago, and Senator Susan Kent, who sits on the oversight, one of the oversight committees that, um, approves, uh, the budgets for like minute services at the state level, and I, so I had asked, uh, what kind of, uh, tactics were being, you know, utilized, uh, to, you know, bolster voter, electronic, uh, voter security, um, you know, in lieu of all of the, the attacks that had come, um, you know, against our country for, um, electronically? And so I was just curious, what, what are they doing at the county level? Because Senator Kent said that they weren't doing anything at the state level, um, that actually the budgets had been, uh, cut for minute services, and so there wasn't, um, much occurring at all. So, I'm excited that we're utilizing, uh, technology to make our, our systems more efficient, but I'm a little concerned at the same time, you know, just when it comes to cybersecurity and, and what the county has and plans. And, and it was kind of painful, uh, Lisa and I and Trent, I'm sorry, Trevor, uh, back in twenty-sixteen, we were up to, what, two-thirty in the morning waiting for our, our, uh, election results to come back in, and so, um, I never did really understand what the snafu was there. So if you could just, I'm sorry, that was like a really big, wide question, but if you could just give a little insight as to what it is that we can anticipate and what the county is doing, that would be great.
I'll do my best. Um, the electronic poll books for the voter experience, they, we plan to deploy three to five of them per polling place, and, um, they will be used by the greeter judges and by the roster table, and for where you register. So they're, they're benefit, they'll replace the paper rosters that you page through. Mm-hmm. Yep, yep. And then they'll also help us kind of behind the scenes, because as we get to the last couple of days prior to an election, Dakota County has to print out their rosters and have them set, and we still have hundreds of people doing absentee voting, which then, that Saturday prior to election and that Monday, we are handwriting into, um, all of the books who came in past the county's deadline. And so this, these poll books link into the state system and automatically feed all that information, so we have a lot less risk of errors and not allowing people to double vote. And as far as security, the state, through the SVRS system, through the Secretary of State, they dictate to us how our computers have to be, um, in our election room and how they can only have a certain number of things on them and the types of security. They provide a whole sheet to our IT department, and they did similar with these e-poll books. We've received that through the state. And I know there's, um, right now, there's, um, in the legislature, there's, uh, they're trying to get more funding to even do more with the SVRS system. Does that help?
Okay, a little bit. So what I heard you say is that it's going to be utilized for, um, voter check-in?
Mm-hmm.
And then so, people will still use paper ballots in voting, and that'll be collected in that traditional method? Okay. Terrific, thank you. I was just curious.
Is that a motion to approve, Councilmember Foltz?
Yes, sir. A motion to approve.
Motion approved, seconded by Councilmember Balsanik. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those oppose, nay. The motion prevails. Okay, uh, comments from the audience? Is there any comments from the audience this evening? Comments from the audience? Okay? None, council? Announcements? Any announcements? Councilmember Brock.
Tomorrow night is Hastings tastings at St. Elizabethan Seton, and, um, it is an annual fundraiser event that is put on by Hastings Family Service, and it's a wonderful event, and there's tons of food, so I just recommend everybody who can attend to attend.
Thank you for that announcement. Is there any further announcements? Councilmember Foltz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just a reminder that the City of Hastings has been accepted into a pilot program with Excel Energy that's called the Partners in Energy Program, and so the city is looking for volunteers, um, just as individuals, or you could be a business owner or a representative of an organization, um, who is interested in promoting clean energy or energy efficiencies within our, within our community. Uh, last week, I had attended the Community Clean Energy Conference in the role as an employee of the City of Red Wing, actually, because I had been the sustainability coordinator there for three years, and I participated in a panel of, uh, cities as my, as myself that were being recognized, and we were, um, provided a community achievement award for our work on partners in energy projects. And so I was taking good notes of what has worked well in the other communities as well, and I'm looking forward to, um, helping our, our own partners in energy project as well, as best as I can. So, thanks.
Thank you for that announcement. Appreciate that. Is there any other announcements, council? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we have a few. On Monday, April ninth, uh, at seven PM, the Pilot Commission will be meeting here at Hastings City Hall. And then the next day, Tuesday, April tenth, uh, Parks and Rec Commission meeting will be at six PM. Turn up the heat in this building, because I don't think we're going to get any better weather, and it's still going to be in the thirties, I think. On Thursday, April twelfth, at six-thirty, Hedra will be meeting, uh, here at City Council Chamber, six-thirty, April twelfth. And then on Monday, April sixteenth, uh, City Council will have a workshop at six PM. The topic will be emergency preparedness, and at seven PM will be our next city council meeting. meeting. Again, that'll be on Monday, April sixteenth. We have no further business before the council, a motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Liefel makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn.
You forgot my anniversary.
Vaughn, there we go.
You forgot my anniversary.
Councilmember Balsanik's wedding.
Councilmember Balsanik, I believe you have one more announcement.
Well, I, I.
Do you remember what anniversary number this is? We're not going to screw up like we did that one year, right?
I don't know, I, it was not my intention to announce it, but as long as I have the floor.
Uh-oh.
My wife and I, Betsy and I, are sure that this year it is our forty-ninth wedding anniversary. We went through an elaborate algorithm to discern exactly how many years we had been married. We had been adding years onto 1969, and what we felt this year was that it would be simpler to subtract a year from nine, 2019. So with that, both of us are sure that it is our forty-ninth wedding anniversary.
Your second forty-ninth anniversary party, yes. Something like that.
All right.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to adjourn.
And gosh, thank you so much for recognizing that.
Certainly. I feel informed, I feel enlightened. Councilmember Liefel made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn, no. So that motion, and that's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we adjourn. Thank you.[1792.53]